Did you turn it on in the back? Just waiting for Mercy to get things set up.
Are you going?
Hmm?
You doing the try to cheat dinner thing? We all got invited to this anniversary dinner.
Huh? Are you good? I, cool.
Hey, when are we doing yoga?
Right now.
You'll, you'll need it.
We're going for a beer and then we're going to yoga.
Yeah.
Yoga?
Yeah.
Anytime, buddy.
We should do a council.
Yeah.
Is that in readiness for Mercy? Is that for presentation or is that just running agenda info? Ah, so how are we managing then? Are we going to be able to get her going? Okay. Alright, so we shall leave that to be at the moment and carry on. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of council for Monday, January the 12th. Call to order at slightly after seven. Looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation time. This is the opportunity for public to speak and say their piece. Just curious though, full house folks, how many of you are here for anything other than Ocean Grove? Having said that, see, we're good. We got right to the point. Having said that, we went through a fairly lengthy public participation and allowed for those that were here the last meeting to speak and say their piece. That has all been recorded and council's been made very aware of that. So I would ask, it's great that you're here to show your presence, but I would like to at least make sure that if there's new points of information or new speakers coming forward, that they are the ones to do so first. And then if you have a real burning desire to add, as long as it's new information, folks, at this time, we'll open it up for public participation. So there are some more seats over on the far side. We'll just give it a second here for these folks to get seated. And for the benefit of our recorders, if you would please state your name and your address. If you don't like to do that because we are webcast, then you can provide that to our recorder before the meeting's out. Thank you. Go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I have to excuse myself for conflict of interest because I live at Ocean Grove.
Thank you. And now, we'll have to go.
Mayor and council, I addressed you on December 11th and I gave the full written report about, obviously, the proposals of planning to Ocean Grove. Subsequent to that then, as everything has been submitted by me before, what we have done is submitted a proposal. A petition has been put forward by all the Ocean Groves, which, and of course, it goes back to the same part, that all the roads and infrastructure should not be borne by the Ocean Grove. So this petition has been initiated and signed by 108 owners and residents, which puts forward a collective voices in stating that these costs should be borne by all Callwood taxpayers and not solely by Ocean Grove owners. The petition states, "We, the undersigned, concerned Callwood citizens and property owners in Ocean Grove, who urge our civic leaders to rule that the upkeep and repair of the stated areas to the through roads, their infrastructure, the riparian zones, and trails which transit Ocean Grove be borne by all Callwood taxpayers, of which we are all a part, and not solely by those owning property within Ocean Grove." This has been submitted by myself, Bruce Tate, on behalf of, and this is the signed petition of the 108.
Thank you, and a few, that's great. Thank you. Next.
Bruce Morrison, 3373 Billhurst. Good evening. To introduce myself, I'm a taxpayer in the city of Callwood, and as such, I'm very interested in the proper development of our community. Now regarding my interest in Ocean Grove application for variance, I am also a parent of one of the residents who will be affected by the inclusion or lack thereof of the offsite improvements of Seafield Road. And he could not be here tonight, so I'm here in his place, basically. Developers of Ocean Grove made a comment to the city that was captured in the report to council on the 10th of December, to the effect that the development would not be feasible if the revised Seafield offsite improvements were made mandatory. Now, to put that into perspective, if the potential gross sales of the planned project are in excess of $1 billion, $1.5 billion perhaps, and the inclusion of $1.35 million is going to put that in jeopardy, then, and we're talking now less than 1/10th of 1% of the gross sales. I suggest that this developer is too marginalized to be a good risk for the city of Callwood. The city and its residents have endured enough failed projects. If the developer is not adequately funded to complete the planned project, this one could very well be another incomplete project, not in the same sense as the very visible ones, but nonetheless, a real disappointment to the city and to nearby residents. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. Stuart Parkinson, 3230 Seligway. This may be a little repetitive, but I do have a burning desire to say it, so I guess that gives me leeway. After the last meeting, as you noted, there were a lot of comments from Ocean Grove. Mostly were concerned about the downloading of the costs of riparian and trails and roads to ourselves as opposed to other projects in town. And my concern is that I don't see it addressed here on the agenda. There were another items that night that came up that have been addressed by reports. And I want to, I want to make sure that council understands our position, that this isn't something that's related to the development or the rezoning or anything like that. This is, this is an issue that we would like council to address, to discuss, and to make a decision on, independent of whether they decide to proceed with the rezoning or not. We think this is a matter of principle and fairness, and frankly, we don't, we think we're being hard done by. And we would ask your considered discussion of it and a decision to be made, so that we know how you stand. So I guess I would have liked to see a report on it on the agenda as well tonight, on how you're going to move forward, because hopefully, you will agree with us and we'll decide to move forward in this way. And there will be some mechanics to be worked out as it's done, that'll involve the existing stratas and perhaps the developer and certainly yourself. So there's, there's some work to be done on it. As I say, I just wanted to stress that it's totally independent of the actual rezoning, whatever you decide to do with that. Thank you.
It's Daryl Roth at 252 Seafield Road. And thanks for the opportunity. I wasn't here in December to speak at that meeting. And just in brief, I'm here to basically plead to have the improvements on Seafield Road done right away, instead of waiting, as a developer wants, for 500 units to be completed and then to do it at a much later phase. I believe if you change the covenant that's already in place to allow that to happen, then it may never get done at all. Seafield Road, what it is right now, is only half of a road. I don't have storm sewers. I don't have sewers at all. And it literally is half a road, one lane, and no parking. And to tell you the truth, it's such a marginalized street that the people, the strangers that come in from other places, they think that nobody lives there and they dump garbage up and down Seafield Road. But having said that, what it is right now, it is still used, believe it or not, by many people, pedestrians walking in the neighborhood. Dozens of people every night use it because of the beauty of the area. And my plea is, is that it could become so much better if the improvements were done sooner rather than later. And there was the promise from Aquatro to do the improvements in the next phase. That is what we have on title at this present moment. And what the developer is asking you to do, council, is to change that. You have to legally change that promise that was given to fulfill a 45-year promise to make Seafield a regular, normal road. And now the developer is asking you to postpone that yet again, and I think that's just too much to ask for the residents. Thank you very much.
Any others in the audience? We have about five minutes more that we can give to this, if there's anybody that has anything.
Yes, good evening. My name's Lou McCloskey, 3223 Seligway. I was here in December as well, so I won't belay the point. It's just a point, a view that's an option to consider. In other municipalities, they've considered riparian areas to be included as a park. And I was wondering if that was considered whatsoever with regards to this review of this proposal. Insofar that one-third of the property has already been designated as a park. The lower portion is connected to the lagoon. Given that the trail system is, in our view, a public trailway system that connects the community and the riparian area, I think that this area could be considered a park and can be considered a park which could be undertaken by the city of Callwood. Thank you for your time.
Any others?
My name is Bob McKay. I have lived in this area since the 23rd of December this year. Obviously, I am not young, and the notion that the local residents here are going to have to pay for everything, it calls me. My pension won't handle that amount of money. So I would ask that you consider putting whatever improvements you're talking about as a part of the city. Thank you.
My name's Jim Moleston, 3230 Seligway. My comments on the riparian areas, I understand that the riparian area is a fenced-off area by the Fishlands Department. There's not really public access allowed. For that reason alone, I don't see why we should be expected to carry the cost of this. Seems to me that it's more up to fisheries or whatever people have suggested that this should be a riparian stream. They won't allow public access to that. And there's a fence minimum, as I understand it, that is restricted. That runs through the whole. A new developer, I know, wanted to shorten that riparian area and just have the upper part, the streams that exist now as a park area, but according to my last conversation with him, that's not. Just doesn't seem to me to make sense that Callwood should be responsible for this, because it seems to me that it's more of a rental. The access to it is controlled by them. Thank you.
Anyone else looking to make a comment to council? Last and final chance.
Good evening. My name is Chris Tate. I live at 3234 Holgate Lane. I'm one of the people here representing our need to be heard. The thing that I would like to know is, the proposal that is being given to council about our carrying the costs, is this the first time this has happened in Callwood? Are there other areas where through roads are being supported financially by a community local to that area? And parkland areas are being covered for the costs by people in that area? I put it to you to perhaps let us know if this is a test case on your part, or if there is a precedent. Thank you.
And seeing no one else jumping up, we shall continue with the meeting and move on, folks, to mayor's message. Not sure if he's going to get councillor Trese. Good, thank you. Just an opportunity for a few announcements. One, coming in, the 2015 Age Friendly Community Planning and Projects Grant Approval has come in for the Seniors Housing and Support Initiative. It is a $14,000 grant that is through West Shore Parks and Rec. So that money will be contributed to the programming and work that they have in advance, or in moving seniors and that sort of thing along. Another one is media release from the Last Chance to Access Solar Callwood Hot Water Systems. The CRD has taken over that project for the last approximate year, and it is running to an end this spring. So if you have any need for solar hot water, you can contact the program through solarcallwood.ca or through the CRD. We also have a Handbags for Hope. It's its fifth year. It is a fundraiser for, let me define it, struggling with the diagnosis of neuroblastoma research. So we are a collection point for that. So ladies, if you have, guys too, I suppose, but, I know, Rob, just clean out your closet, will you? If anybody has gently-used handbags that they don't mind parting with, we will be collecting them here. One of our staff members is in charge of making that collection, ensuring that they get to the, to the resource. There will be an auction held at the Empress Hotel. They're always very successful in the auction. I'm not sure if it says, no, it doesn't say. I think last year, they raised over 43,000. And with their overall fundraising was 250,000 towards the support of research on that disease. So we're happy to expand that as well. So with that, if no other members of council have anything from their particular areas, we're all good. Happy New Year and we're here. Adoption of the minutes then. Adoption of 4.1.1 Regular Meeting of Council, December the 15th. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Receipt of Cycling Advisory Committee, November 3rd.
Move receipt.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Correspondence requiring council direction. I have nothing in this agenda on that, which moves us to New Business, Planning and Land Use Committee, Memorandum Planning Department, Additional Information Regarding Historical Security Deposits Associated with Rezoning Application, Ocean Grove, Item 6.1.1. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I have to excuse myself once again.
You shall be excusing yourself for Items 6.1.1, 6.1.2, 6.1.3, and we'll call you when we get to finance.
Thank you, your worship. At their regular meeting held on December 15th, 2014, council made the following resolution. That rezoning number RZ-14-003, also known as the Ocean Grove Development Rezoning, that outstanding items from the Planning and Land Use Committee and council and revised staff recommendations be tabled until such time that staff provides information to council concerning what, if any, security deposits associated with the previous Aquatro development are currently held by the city. So we've brought that item back with the following information. If council has some additional questions on details, please feel free to ask staff tonight. And also, please keep in mind that if there is additional information that council would like to see on this, this issue, or other issues pertaining to Ocean Grove, that they, staff can take direction to provide that information prior to the public hearing. So prior to the construction of any units in the old Aquatro development, the previous developer undertook roadworks on a portion of Lagoon Road, the costs for which approximated or exceeded the total security deposit for the 88 units built. Therefore, the security deposit was collected but later released for the 88 units built to date. As a result, the city currently does not hold any residual securities from the previous developer. Currently, the only security deposit with the ocean, associated with the Ocean Grove development in the city's possession is in the amount of $250,000, which is security from the new developers, Seacliff Properties, for works within the riparian area. This replaces a previous security given by the previous developer for the same amount and for the same purpose. Please note that the recommendation in this memo to receive it references it being dated January 7th, 2015. The recommendation should be corrected to refer to it being dated January 8th, 2015. Thank you.
Opened council questions? Nope. Councillor Knoll?
I'd like to thank staff for responding to this in more thorough detail than was in the original memo. I'm happy with the response, and there was only one further question is, the original $250,000 for the riparian area has been replaced by the current developer. Is that contingent on this development being approved as before council right now?
No.
Anyone else? Councillor Day?
Thank you. Just, it's unfortunate that our technology has let us down tonight, because when we're handed out information, it would be nice if we could share it with our audience as well, so they'd know what we're looking at. What I'm looking at is a summary of the security deposits and fees that have been paid for Aquatro. And following along, there's an amount for the riparian area listed at $250,000. Below that, there's a $500,000. Could someone explain that to me?
That was a deposit by the developer because they had a duty to build the community building, and that deposit was released after they completed the community building.
Okay. That's why it says work completed, okay. So just, if I can carry on, looking at the servicing agreements column, which was the $7,000 per unit, it looks like there was amounts, varying amounts, $154,000, $210,000, and lastly, an entry for $42,000. And those have all been released back to the developer because the work has been completed. So does that leave the only thing still in hand, that for the riparian areas?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Move to receive. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, then, is 6.1.2 Memorandum Planning Department, Ocean Grove, Changes to Offsite Improvements and Amenity Charges. Staff?
Thank you, your worship. This memo is to correct several miscalculations of the estimated cost of offsite works associated with the 2007 Aquatro Development Agreement, provided in the staff report dated December 10th, 2014, and presented to council on December 15th, 2014. Unfortunately, staff had used the incorrect historical civil engineering drawings to estimate the cost of the 2007 works. We've since corrected that as stated in the memo. And the net effect of the, is that the additional cost compared to the 2007 works and services, including Seafield Road, are revised from $623,600 to $607,500. If the recommended revisions to the community amenity fund are also included, the additional cost to developer compared to 2007 is revised from $413,600 to $397,500. Staff recommend that this memo be received by council for information. Thank you.
Turning it to council, any questions? Seeing none, motion to receive.
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, staff, for identifying this and bringing it out into the public. Item 6.1.3 Report Planning Department, again, RZ-14-003, Ocean Grove, Outstanding Items from Planning and Land Use Committee and Council, Revised Staff Recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report was tabled at the December 15th, 2014 Regular Meeting of Council. For the benefit for those who were not present at that meeting, I will repeat the following introduction. The application to revise the Ocean Grove Plan, formerly known as Aquatro, was presented to the Planning and Land Use Committee on October 21st, 2014, who then put forward a recommendation to proceed with the application with direction from staff to clarify several key points. The staff report before you was drafted in response to this request from the Planning and Land Use Committee to clarify what offsite improvements, including road upgrades and onsite parking requirements, had been proposed by the developer of the Ocean Grove development. Council also subsequently directed staff to provide additional information on the proposed revised development regarding the internal riparian area, illustration of several of the subdivision lots, and emergency vehicle access for firefighting, which is all provided in the staff report. As for parking, the applicant has now agreed to meet current bylaw standards for offsite parking. Staff had always understood that the application would include the works and services on Seafield Road. However, it became apparent that this was not the intention of the developer. Staff and the developer renegotiated the package of offsite upgrades and amenity contributions to include upgrades to Seafield Road. However, this meant proposed upgrades in other areas and per-unit amenity contributions were reduced to partially offset the added cost of upgrading Seafield Road. Staff estimate that the revised package represents a net increase of approximately $397,500 above what the applicant had expected to contribute when the misunderstanding was discovered at the October 21st, 2014 Planning and Land Use Committee meeting. Based on what the applicant has stated is economically feasible, staff feel that these contributions adequately balance the infrastructure needs of the community and the financial needs of the developer. That being said, it is, of course, council's decision as to whether these revised offsite upgrades and amended contributions are acceptable. Please refer to the amended recommendation and appendix showing track changes to see how the renegotiated offsite upgrades and amenities would be handled in the proposed zoning and development agreement. Tonight, council has the option to forward these applications by endorsing amended recommendation from the Planning and Land Use Committee and instructing staff to draft a rezoning officially planned amendment bylaws prior to their consideration for first reading by council at a future date. Alternatively, council may defer the applications for additional information or refer the application back to committee for their consideration. An option not expressly stated in the report would involve direction to staff to revisit some of the proposed offsite contributions and/or their timing with the developer, and that staff also prepare the bylaws. In conclusion, staff puts forward the following recommendation: That officially recommended plan and zoning amendment bylaws be prepared such that if and when the provisions are made in a registrable development agreement for the conditions stated on pages 6 through 9 of the staff report, consideration will be given to the adoption of the amended bylaws. Excuse me, the amendment bylaws. Thank you.
Opened, council for comment, question? Counselor Knoll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make it very clear that I will not support this amendment to the OCP or the development bylaws on the following reasons. Residents have made it very clear that the roads are expected to be city roads and not strata. I agree in principle, but the illustrated roadworks would be of little use to anybody except the Ocean Grove residents. The new plan will concentrate most of the traffic from Ocean Grove and all of the traffic from existing homes, as well as any future development in the area onto Heatherbell Road and its intersection with Lagoon Road. It will also leave no possibility for any improvement to the road system after this is completed. I find this completely unacceptable. I would like to see the roads returned to the configuration in the original Aquatro plan and to be city roads and built to city standards. The city would then assume, and then as city roads, and maintain them as any other road in Callwood. I agree that taxing the people for a service they will not be receiving is totally unfair. I also believe that the roads should service all of Callwood and not just Ocean Grove. The extra through route, if it's not built now, will never be built unless we put it through the city park or through DND land, both of which I find to be very unlikely. While I'm happy to see some commercial space proposed, I'm not happy with the increased number of houses proposed. Callwood granted a much higher density in the rezoning of this property originally from 340 to 585 units. That's 170% of what would have originally been allowed. For this increase, the city received a new waterfront park and a long list of infrastructure improvements to be paid for by the developer. The proposal before us is for an additional 210 units, making the final 230% of the original zoning. The developer proposes far fewer infrastructure improvements and a road system I deem totally inadequate to service future needs of the area. The riparian area is another issue. Residents have made it clear that they consider it a city park and believe the city should accept maintenance and control of it. Quite clearly, when this original project came before council, the riparian area was designed to handle excess groundwater that would be generated by putting large buildings in the area. As such, it is a drainage project for the development and not originally designed to be a city park. If the developer would choose to build this and then dedicate it to the city as a park, I would be happy for the city to take on maintenance and control of it. As it is now, it's private property owned by the development developer now and/or the strata when the project is finished. I will not have, I will not support the city maintaining private landscaping. I, too, am not happy with the proposed timing for the infrastructure improvements. This site has already demonstrated that financial circumstances can change rapidly, leaving new owners and the city with unfinished infrastructure and ongoing maintenance costs. If the city approves these timelines, I would like to see the developer providing security deposits with the city that are irrevocable. The existing land title allows payment by check or line of credit, both of which are valueless in the case of insolvency of the developer. Again, I find that unacceptable. To summarize, I will not be supporting this proposal going to OCP amendment and zoning bylaw amendment in its current form. I would recommend that council refer this back to planning and zoning for a complete rethink, designing the roads as city roads, and returning to council when such modifications have been made. I won't make that motion now because I would like to hear the rest of council speak.
Any other members?
Ladies and gentlemen, you're going to hear things that you favor and disfavor, so if I would mind asking you to keep your applause quiet. I appreciate your support, but that would mean I'd also have to give in to boos, and I don't like that at all. So just, let's be respectful. Anybody else at council?
Thank you. I'm actually, I'm supportive of the project. I will be making some amendments to it this evening. And I'll just go through the things that I think, or at least how I feel about it. I have struggled with the strata versus public road. And I've had conversations with staff for several hours, actually trying to understand the concept of what a strata road is and what a public road is, and are people in Ocean Grove, for example, being double taxed if they're being responsible for their own road? And the costs and benefits and so on. It basically works out to, it costs the city, over the lifetime of the road, I've been informed, about $10,000 a year. But I still think, from a fairness standpoint, it should be a public road. So I will be making a recommendation tonight that it is not a strata road but a public road, and that the project should proceed with that concept. Dealing with the improvement on Seafield. The Seafield issue is, again, once the improvement's made on Seafield, then it becomes the city's responsibility. And my concern is, you improve everything now, then you have a whole bunch of construction trucks, everybody coming down, doing all the work. The road gets torn up, and then all the taxpayers are having to pay to get it fixed after the units are built. So from my standpoint, it makes a lot more sense to actually wait until you have the units built out to a certain level, and then you repair the road and you get a well-functioning road. So I am actually supportive of waiting and having that improvement on Seafield occur once we have a certain amount of construction actually built out. The riparian, that's, it's a struggle because it is on private land right now. It is not a public land. It's not the public's responsibility to take care of something that's on private land. And right now, the initial development with Aquatro was that it was put in with the understanding that it was going to be on private land. So at this point, I feel as though the city's hands are tied when it comes to who's responsible for that because the city can't take on responsibilities for areas that are on public. So I will actually, or excuse me, on private. So I will actually be supportive of the riparian cost being borne by the stratus, but I will be supportive of them turning into a public road. And then I'm also, the other concern that I will look to staff and ask about is, on what I've read so far regarding Heatherbell, that the developer will be building a temporary sidewalk, but there's never a definition of when that sidewalk actually becomes permanent. And that, I would like to ensure that that actually occurs at some point within the development. And I am done, thank you. And you're allowed to boo me, I don't care.
Anyone else? Counselor Logan? And then Counselor Day?
Thank you, worship. You know, it's tough for those of us that were around when we considered the Aquatro project. And we tend to compare this project to that project, which I think in some respects it's a little unfair. Two different projects, two different times, two different economic sets of circumstances. And looking back at what the city has already achieved, which is the significant protection of our waterfront, which is a massive benefit and some infrastructure improvements already. And then for me, is looking, keeping the eye on the prize, which is having that area built out. And I think, I think it's a win-win. It's a neighborhood that will be complete instead of an area that's full of broom and other issues as a result of some areas that have not been kept up. So I think that in itself, having that developed will be a benefit to the area and certainly to the taxpayer as a whole. I totally agree with regards to the comments to the roads. I think they should be public roads, and that was something that I pushed for in the original development for many of the same reasons that were stated earlier. You get a consistent level of service. The city has some control over the roads. And from a taxpayer's point of view, I mean, it's, everybody should be treated equally. And the other compelling argument to me was that there is a commercial component which will draw some more of the public into the area as well as being central to the park and encouraging more of the public to, into the neighborhood to utilize the park. So from that perspective, I, too, will be looking at some improvements to, or getting rid of that language, rather, that says the road is strata. Yeah, I struggle too, as Counselor Martin does, on the riparian area. You know, quite frankly, I'm not sure that it's a large ticket item compared to the roads. I think the road is the big one for me. Certainly, as was stated earlier, having the riparian area as private and strata was a condition before to deal with certain issues as a result of the construction of units in the area. So from that perspective, I will be supporting the development with the changes to the wording for the roads and look forward to some discussion regarding the Seafield issues. Thanks.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. First of all, a question on the report. In the portion of the report that talks about onsite works, there are A, B, C, and D for conditions. And A says that road, sidewalk, drainage, sanitary sewer, water, street lighting, and related ancillary works to be phased with building permits and completed prior to occupancy of building under the applicable building permit or prior to sale of subdivided lot. And that's the part that had me confused as I was reading this today because I wondered whether or not this developer is able to sell off portions of the site for someone else to actually complete the development.
Through the chair, I believe that wording, and I'll call upon the city engineer to correct me if I'm wrong, was intended to address the fact that the revised plan has some single-family housing that would take the form of subdivided lots and did not mean to infer that there would be pieces of the development carved off, which the Seafield property has not at any point stated is their intention.
So then, the other, I guess, big topic of conversation is about the roadways and whether or not they would be strata or public roads. And I guess, for me, there are a number of strata roads in Callwood, and I have certainly seen many applications come forward where strata roads have been the result. And for the most part, those strata roads have been roads that perform pretty much as driveways, you know, but shared by the people who use them. So from my point of view, it makes sense, if these roadways are in the current configuration that is in the proposal as we've seen it thus far with this developer, it does make sense that those roads would be strata roads because they're not designed for through traffic from other parts of the community. Very, very little servicing is actually going to be done through the roadways as they're currently designed. I can think of Ponside Terrace as a strata road, Claudette Court is a strata road. And they were all negotiated by developers who felt that they could best service the subdivision they were creating with the roadway configuration that met their own standards, and not necessarily those of the through roads in the city. The other issue is around parks or green space, and whether or not that's private or belongs to the city of Callwood. And there are a number of very important greenways in Callwood that are privately owned, many of which are privately maintained. Thinking of the pond at the corner of Fulton and, trying to remember the name of the other road there. But it's not far from Claudette Court as well. And the development has taken place to manage the water quality in that area as well, and continues to be maintained by the property on which it sits. There are many privately-owned creeks and streams that are maintained in accordance with provincial legislations. And it really is a matter of whether or not, you know, they can become parks. Depends on what their usability is because parks, I mean, parks are for many things, but they're not, they're not always conducive when you have buildings right next to them. The pond by Ponside Terrace would be an example where the homes are so very close to the pond that it makes it, you feel like you're in someone's backyard if you go into that park. So I think that's an important consideration when we talk about what should be park in Callwood. And also, there may be other factors, like the drainage for the properties, and even some geothermal functioning items that need to be maintained. In regard to the Seafield road improvements, the, one thing that Langford has done very well in their developments in building out roadways is to do half, develop the full width of the road, but leave the final paving until after all the buildout is done, so that the roads aren't necessarily, they're usable, but they're not at their best until further on in the process. And I just wanted to touch on the timing of the amenities, which it took me a while to sort out. I ended up highlighting things in different colors to understand when things would be done. And in my package, the first things that are going to be done, which is in the first 12 months, is that a temporary sidewalk will be provided on Heatherbell, which is a paved sidewalk. Concrete sidewalk to a value of about $10,000 is being put on Machosen Road. And they are going to redesign the intersection of Machosen Road to include a left-turn lane, and to provide for the future needs for a traffic signal at some point in time in the future. So the layout will be such that it could accommodate a signal in the future. So that's not very much that's going to happen in the first 12 months. And then, the very next thing that happens, happens, got my notes to get out of my way here, is that, sorry, it was Seafield Road after 200 units have been sold. That was going to be done. And then, after 240 units had been completed, the signalization would occur at Machosen Road. And then, after 350 dwelling units, they would reconstruct Goldfinch Road. They would do upgrades on Lagoon Road. They would put in the flashing amber pedestrian signals, and upgrade the transit stop. And that's a fair long while to wait for any of those things to happen. So my question, I guess, to staff is, is there any surety in the form of a bond or a deposit for those works?
There isn't until the work is required. And then sometimes they'll provide a bond rather than do the work immediately, depending on whether we allow that at the time. The sort of guarantee, if you like, that it'll be built is only through the fact that they will want to recoup more value from the project by completing it. To the extent that that is true, that provides the, any guarantee there is that the work will be done. One way to look at that is that if they only build, you know, 10 more houses, should they really be required to do all of those roads?
Okay, thank you. So, I'm very aware of the fact that the neighborhood has been left in a half-built condition. And I'm also aware that there are a number of promises that the original developer made to organize this development in such a way that the stratas would each take care of a portion of the riparian area, and that that would make sense to them. And that it doesn't necess, because the project hasn't completed, it doesn't necessarily leave the residents in that area in a better place to continue on as is. But at the same time, I'm not sure that I can find any real good justification for me to vote to accept the proposal as it's been presented. Because we're asking for greater density, we appear to be getting less benefits for the city. And certainly, if we were to consider the roadways as designed to be public roads, I think that's a huge loss to the community because we won't get that road put in a better way in the future. The roads will be the roads, and it will be complete, such as it is. So, unfortunately, I don't feel that I can support the development moving forward. I wish I could find someplace to negotiate or to wiggle through. But hopefully, I've laid out my concerns, and I hope that the development will proceed in a better way, with a better configuration in the future.
Anyone else? Just before you go a second time, Jason, if you were going to go to motion. Okay, clarifying, first?
Two points I would like staff to clarify. Counselor Martin has pointed out that Seafield improvements shouldn't be carried out because the road will be used for construction access and probably damage the improvements. My understanding is, the intent is to move the main entrance to Heatherbell Road and close off the access to Seafield completely. Is that correct? And what would the timing on that be?
In the resolution as it stands, and in the current development agreement, I don't think there's any timetable for removing the access onto Seafield. So right now, that would be up to the developer. There would be nothing, because that's a public road, there'd be nothing to use him, to stop him using that entrance until near the end of the project.
Thank you. And the second question is, I don't see road cross-sections in either the proposals that went to planning and zoning, or in the current proposal before us. Are these roads as proposed, are they going to be built to city standards or a lower standard?
Assuming we're referring to the road cross-sections that are off-site?
No, the road sections within the site, all of the...
As we're currently thinking of those as strata roads, they haven't produced any cross-sections that show it's to city standards, to my recollection. Does the developer has a correction on that?
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just, you know, it's tough when developments take an awful long time to get underway and then get stopped partway through, and people are left with lost expectations. I see that there needs, you know, or looks to need to be, a lot of work yet to be done between the existing owners of properties built, the developer, and what might be for the future of that property in time. I have some concerns that I, I mean, many of the ones that have been addressed and already commented on, I'm not going to reiterate on, but some of the things that I didn't see, I checked on here. It says here, the developer, in the off-site infrastructure upgrades, says the developer will not be responsible for extending the sewer to Heatherbell Road. From where, to where, and who's responsible? Because if we're hooking people up within 12 months, do we have to have a plan in place on this? Page seven?
Yeah, it says that the developer would hook up the existing, well, would provide sewer access for the existing houses. That would go to Matilda. So, there's no construction all the way to Heatherbell from Matilda.
Just wanting to understand where that was coming from. Under that same section, E, provide flashing amber pedestrian signals and associated crosswalk silverworks on Lagoon at intersection of Heatherbell. Quite frankly, I don't believe that that's enough. We have residences directly across from that intersection who are already greatly impacted with the closeness of the proximity of their driveways, and the road, it's on a curve and a hill either way coming there. And I know that there have been accidents. People have hit the telephone pole that's right there at the corner, and it's a fair drop off that side in there. So I'm not sure that a flashing light for pedestrians would be sufficient for traffic, for allowing safe egress, particularly for those residences that are currently built and occupied. I'm not sure if that can be part of negotiating or discussions further. The other section there that was referred to in I as redesigning the intersection of Machosen Road to include a traffic signal, pardon me, and left-turn lane, how does that whole redesign factor and fit with the potential of a development where the pilgrim church property is? Because I understand that they've got that sort of parky part, then there's the church, then there's the house sits there, and then behind is the community gardens and whatever. So I don't know if there's a plan coming forward yet, if we've seen anything, but I noticed that there is a for sale, or I mean, a sold sign now on that property. And it may have an impact, or we might have a better design come out of that if we're looking at that project at the same time. Aside from that, I think that, you know, we may be, for the same reasons that other council members have mentioned already on riparian and roads, I'm not going to get into that and whatever, but those are just my additional notes that I wanted to weigh in on. Staff?
To update council on the status of the former church property on Painter and Machosen Road, which also includes one of the residences adjacent to the former church property, it has been purchased by a developer who has approached us with an application for rezoning. Staff is currently working with that developer on making sure that the application meets as best it can, council's direction in the OCP, these are the development guidelines. We are looking at the access for that development, and will certainly put forward any recommendations as needed to coordinate with this, these other upgrades.
Can I go ahead?
Yep.
So, I'd just like to make a motion then, please, that staff be directed to provide further information related to, and just for a minute, so I'll just say E, which is to provide the flashing light pedestrian signal. I, which is the redesigning of the intersection of Machosen Road. And also, I'm going to add Seafield improvement timelines, and report back to council prior to public hearing.
Secondor?
Second.
Comments, discussion?
I'm not exactly sure what the motion is. There is no motion to prepare the bylaws or any of that. I think the motion for further information, the public hearing wouldn't happen until the bylaws were prepared and passed two readings, I believe. Is that correct?
I, may I? I was, I was, I was instructed by staff, and perhaps staff can help me, that this should have been, this one should have been before we vote on if we're going to move the bylaw forward or move this recommendation forward or not. Hence the reason I brought this forward first. I'm happy to bring it forward after the fact, if that's a better timeline to bring it forward.
Well, I believe the director of planning can provide better direction for the layout and the steps to take. My understanding when we were chatting, though, is this is if other issues were presented or discussed tonight that don't really have an impact on moving the agenda items that we're talking about tonight forward, but more information is definitely wanted or required. That you could ask council for a motion, asking staff to do more research on that information and bring that back to council. And I know your emphasis was, you wanted that information back before we would hold any kind of a public hearing. Your motion could be saying even before the bylaws are prepared, but that would be for the director of planning to address.
In past practice, if council wishes to proceed with the recommendation, but amend it with direction to bring back further information prior to public hearing, in a sense, the direction and the recommendation to move forward with a drafting of the bylaw can be combined in one resolution. That's what I've seen in my experience. And we would not schedule the public hearing until that information was provided back to council. Conceivably, it could happen between the drafting of the bylaw and second reading of the bylaw.
So you're suggesting that I should withdraw?
Excuse me?
Are you suggesting I should withdraw that motion?
Well, I think the motion could be, could refer to the motion that is before council, so that we could be directed to draft a bylaw, but also, report back to council with the clarifications or additional information that is requested.
So are you, so you would like me to move the original motion, then? Is that what you're saying, and then include this? Because I, we have a motion on the table right now, so I'm wondering, what do I do with that? It was seconded, so...
I don't believe we do.
I'll just redraw it. How's that, and then make it simple? Okay, I'll withdraw.
We just, we have to vote it down, and then you can reintroduce it or whatever? So do you want to do that? Or can we table it and bring it back?
Now you're confusing me.
Well, I mean, it probably will come back up as a discussion after the other one.
After the other one, okay.
So...
So which is better?
There's no better, but this works.
Secondor? All's in favor? Opposed, motion carried. So now we're on the main motion of this particular item before us for discussion? No, no, Madam Mayor, there is no motion on the table. No, we had no recommendation in their pursuant to words. So, have you guys been working on... So have you guys been working on something? Councilor Nault, you had made comment, I'm trying to find. Councilor Logan's got it.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will move the recommendation subject to item D under onsite works, that any new roads would be developed as public roads. Unclear whether the statutory language is still required, so I'll turn to staff on that one.
That's what the engineer recommended.
And further... So the wording that's recommended for, that would replace D, that's D being the strata road language, be that any new roads will be developed... That any new roads will be developed as public roads, et cetera.
I'm not sure that that's covering what our discussion was.
Yeah.
As a result of that motion, all the roads in the development would be public roads.
Okay. Okay, all right, happy with that. There was more, we're going to have to collaborate here on this one, folks. Normally, the recommendation comes in an A, B, C, D, or E kind of of there, but our conversation and discussion this evening has kind of varied from that. So let's go back to what was important and...
Sorry, I have no idea where you're working from as far as what motion is that you're putting forward.
Number six.
What page are you on?
Page six.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a recommendation right there. So, yeah, so we're just amending parts of it.
Okay, so the amendment parts to the recommendation that's on our sheets, which are page six, seven, eight, and nine. If you can review through that, we have...
And just a point of clarification, Your Worship, in terms of timing of Councilor Martin's requests, whether they would be subject to further information on pedestrian crossing, intersection design, et cetera, et cetera, that Councilor Martin had raised? So that would be incorporated into that recommendation as a subject to, right? Prior to public hearing?
Yes.
As opposed to a separate motion? I believe, which is what you were recommending?
Yeah, I don't know if I'd use the word subject to. You could, this recommendation could go as amended with the additional direction to have staff report back on the items that you'd like to have revisited. At that time, the, this could be amended such that the development agreement reflects what council decides prior to public hearing.
Okay, so that, Your Worship, just to be clear to staff, that that would be my expectation as part of the recommendation, to include those items as outlined by Councilor Martin previously.
So for clarity, do we need clarity? I'm looking down here. Councilor Logan, you've made a motion. Do we have a secondor on that?
Second.
Any further conversation, discussion? Councilor Nault?
Yes, I'm afraid the motion as proposed has us building city streets that don't service the city. They serve as only the existing or the proposed development. I can't support that unless we have some sort of road connecting somewhere else on the southern end of the development, for example, across from, across Seafield, across the river or creek as originally proposed. The existing, the motion on the table just basically has the developer building roads that he wants, that don't do anything for Callwood, and that Callwood is going to pay for the maintenance and so forth. So it doesn't really answer my other big concern, is there's no way to improve Callwood's road system after this development is approved. There is going to be one exit from that area for almost all of the traffic. I can't see anybody cutting off of Heatherbell, down the interior road, and then back out and over to Goldfinch. It just doesn't make sense that anybody would take that path. So I will not be supporting that. I would like to ask if I could make a friendly amendment in that the proposed road layout be adjusted to have a road connecting the Seafield through to Goldfinch Road. And I would move that as, if that's accepted as a friendly amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
I second the amendment. Conversation on the amendment to the amended recommendation? Councilor Martin?
Two things. One, we have never discussed that with people that live on Goldfinch, so I'd feel very uncomfortable with making a decision this evening without having that feedback and having them have an opportunity to speak about it as well. Second thing is, you know, this is where I have struggled with the idea of strata versus public. I live on Portsmouth. Portsmouth is a dead-end road, but it's a public road. Nobody uses, or nobody should be using Portsmouth except people who live on Portsmouth. And city has a lot of dead-end roads. And, you know, the difference between, you know, if it's for one or three or five residents, I can see, but when we start talking up to 700 residents, that's a lot of Callwood people. And so that's where I've had to struggle with the concept of it being a strata road versus a public road and what's truly fair and what's not necessarily legal, you know, from a pure legal standpoint, because we could go just with a strata, but I think from a fairness level, I still feel comfortable with it being a public.
Anyone else? Councilor Day?
I would just point out that having that road connection is consistent with the original plan for the development, so I don't think that's a, it's a big surprise for any residents. That was part of the original Aquatro development plan.
Anybody else? Call the question, all's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Or I mean, fails, pardon me? Back to the regular or the amended recommendation that's before us? Any further conversation?
Could you please read the motion?
Councilor Logan? It is as provided with the discussion items as requested for further information from staff for, back onto my page.
So it's as written on page six under recommendation, because I had trouble following that, too.
Six through nine.
And with one change, which is under onsite works for D, where it says any new roads will be developed as, and it said strata, but we're changing that to city roads. And then it goes on to the A through J about when different roadworks will be required to be constructed. And carries on to the end of the report where it goes through energy efficiency.
Plus, there are some additions to that as well, as outlined by Councilor Martin.
Item E with the flashing amber pedestrian, item I redesigning the intersection of the Chosen in conjunction with the development that's coming in at Pilgrim, or two of the others. Oh, and Seafield timeline that Councilor Martin was requesting. So that's what we have before us. We have a mover and a secondor. Call the question, all's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Retrieve our missing counselor, please. Moving into finance, folks, 6.2.1. Report regarding AVICC, AGM, and convention, and second call for resolutions and nominations. Maybe we'll give these folks a moment to, y'all don't want us to listen to the rest? Geez. We're expecting that each and every one of you are going to make an appearance through budget discussions that are going forward, too.
That's right. I should shut up. That's right.
Here. They just vacate premises just like that. No, but they're pretty big for it.
That just sounded funny.
Barney kicks him. Barney went looking under the Christmas tree. He goes, hey, where's that hot stuff chocolates? Where's that box of chocolates? Who's that box of chocolates? Those truffle thingies that I gave you? I said, yeah, you gave them to me. They're gone. He goes, no, they're not gone. I said, yeah. I said, I took them to my office candy bowl.
We don't usually do friendly amendments, right? So that's kind of like, it was just confusing. There was too many amendments. Have a good night. Thank you. Geez. That just made me laugh when she just said that, though. I think we all deserve that chocolate.
Thank you.
Carol?
Oh, oh, we'll be done.
That's why I took your water glass away. I don't know what happened to the glasses.
What happened to Lilha and I? Lilha and I are not special enough to get cups. That's nice.
I think the planners stole them.
All right, council, we shall get back to the business of the day. AVICC, AGM, and convention, and that sort of thing. So we have to plan ahead in here, and our lovely staff are anxious to make sure that we've got the right accommodations and things booked forward. So the information is before you. AVICC convention this year is in Courtney. It has been sort of habit or tradition. We've had a couple members of council attend on most occasions. And so here we are. There is a recommendation before you. You can ask questions, comment. Councilor Martin?
I have a question. And I guess I'm looking more to Councilor Day, and I guess you're the only person, or have you got? Is it worthwhile? Like, honestly, like, for $1,000, it just, I struggle with it just from a standpoint of thinking, do we really need to go every year?
Well, it greatly adds to the value of UBCM, which we've never questioned attending UBCM. One of the things that would be very nice to see is more people from the capital region on AVICC as board members and participating in the actual nuts and bolts of making our resolutions come to fruition. There have been a number of very important issues come out of AVICC, including oil spill response issues, including BC Ferry Fair's issues, which is the latest paper on the impacts, has had a lot of airplay with local media. And it's where we have an opportunity to bring our items first that are going to UBCM as we're trying to lobby the provincial government to get things done. I've had a great deal of success bringing forward issues around youth mental health, for example. I've had, I believe, three resolutions now come forward through AVICC and on to UBCM. Haven't had all of my prayers answered, but at least they have, you know, my concerns and my issues have been raised, and they've been raised with the province to the best of our ability. And I guess that's the best I can do. So I do think it's valuable. It's where the Tamak Treaty Advisory Committee grew out of session with UBCM in 2003 after the province kind of went behind our back and signed a memorandum of understanding with the Union of British Columbia Municipalities without consulting local municipalities whatsoever. They went straight to consulting UBCM. And out of that grew a need for us to be consulted, and eventually the creation of the Treaty Advisory Committee itself, so that our views could actually be directly brought forward rather than represented without our input. So it is important, and I don't know that everybody needs to go, but it is very helpful to have more people go. It doesn't always have to be that much money. If we're willing to carpool and perhaps even share accommodations, we can easily get more people to these events at a lower cost if cost is the only issue. That doesn't always work, but sometimes it can work.
Yeah, I think people should go camp.
And just for instance, the...
You especially.
The Parksville Training, Parksville Council Training session that's coming up. Councilors Day and Trace and myself are all combining our accommodation there, so it, what did we have? About a $600 saving to the city by combining. So, you know...
Well, I'm not sleeping with Gordy.
Gordy's not going. In any case, you know, it, there has to be a willingness to, you know, to do that and whatever. So in past AVICC, Councilor Day and myself have attended. And again, accommodation sharing has, and ride sharing and whatever has proved to be a better...
There was a time I couldn't get anyone to go to AVICC with me. In fact, Callwood did not used to belong to AVICC, longest-standing association in the province, and Callwood wasn't a member for many years. Instead, we only belonged to UBCM. It's been a good thing, and it gives us an opportunity to do a lot of work without necessarily an agenda on the floor, especially it might provide some opportunities where sewage treatment is involved in terms of that networking and the building of relationships outside of a specific agenda being on the table.
Move the recommendation.
Further conversation, discussion? Go ahead.
The recommendation is what?
What? Exactly.
The recommendation was...
Two or three.
Two or three.
Let's do three.
Does staff need to know who those two or three are? So we really should pick the names?
We don't know, we don't need to know who they are at this time, but we do need to know how many so that proper accommodations can be made.
Just before we move this motion, could we just confirm who could theoretically go? Because I can't.
And I would...
All right, so we've got enough.
I mean, I don't have to either if we've got new people of interest. I think it's more important for them to do that, so...
I potentially could go, but I'm not married to it either. I'm happy to send others.
So the recommendation, Your Worship, will include the number three?
Well, I think we, if we leave it open, up to three, maybe, could we, could we maybe? In this case, we can do an up to.
Actually, if, we have to book the rooms, so we need to know how many rooms are we booking?
Well, and I, and I understand, like, so we could make the recommendations of up to three. Now, who are they? You got till the end of the week to supply the names to Ms. Marcy.
I've already booked three rooms.
Yeah.
But I need to, I need to confirm on who's attending, and if three ladies are attending, perhaps you guys might want to combine and have one room again.
Ten, you say? A little early. Anyways. So we'll leave the recommendation as it is then. Call the question, all's in favor? Opposed, motion carried?
Can I tell you after I find out if they snore or not? Can I tell you after I find out if they snore or not?
Bylaws, please. Uh, seven point one, bylaw number one five six two, first, second, and third readings. Callwood, Maine Sewer Local Area Service bylaw establishment and loan authorization, uh, for three one 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 Wood Park Drive.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried.
Move second.
Second, second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Just a, a quick question. Um, this is for one property. Do we have to do these bylaws every time a single property joins? Can we not do them in, like, save them up till there's, like, six or something? It seems like an awful lot of paperwork.
It's an enlargement to the...
Usually people come forward when they're desperate to get a connection, otherwise they won't pay the money. And, uh, if we save them up, then they just replace their deceptive fields instead.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Just one quick question. Um, how do you get the service to them when they're one?
Uh, the developer of, uh, Wood Park, Wood End Road, um, he built the sewer along Wood Park Drive.
Oh, okay.
Cause we didn't let him take a shorter route.
Okay. Call the question, all those in favor? Posed, motion carried, uh, motion to move in camera.
We can do third.
What, what? Oh, no, wait, one more. We got, sorry, 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 sorry. We got a third.
Second, third.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Now, we get to move in camera. Motion, please.
Motion to kick out Planny.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried.
You don't even work for it, really. I am, I am. That's it, I'm leaving.
I know, laughing. That was hilarious. That's a bunch of... That's just really laugh. Well, we're looking...
Um... I think we're coming up. Maybe that's why we're here. How are our... I'm gonna just, um, jump there. Remind me tomorrow. Change up. Remind me this morning. I'm gonna have to go over to the... We had to go. We don't have to stop. That's like, that way here.
Oh, what is it? All right. What is it? What is it?
That was, you got right off the top, right? You're here and you might, you might walk. I just go around here. Yeah, that's cool.